This is the various directly with the state.
Somewhere in this scenario, there's a ruling or a discussion or a law that says, once they have been in business for 12 years, under something to do with state laws, I don't know what those codes, they have to have a requirement of that. Is that right?
Not any of them. State laws that are, that go to, you run across it. And you, right?
Is there, so to be clear, is there a state law requirement after, since they've been working for 12 years?
Yes, and after 12 years, I think, even though they came in and in a 12-year period, I believe that they were grandfathered. At the end of that 12-year period, I think it's a requirement, they have to do it. And as I understand it, they've been out there longer than 12 years.
And so, and it's not, this is not, Jerry, this is unclear about this, it's not that there's a state law regarding sprinkler systems, it's a state law regarding any sort of grandfather.
I think it's a state law regarding sprinkler systems. They have to put in some kind of fire protection. I don't.
I, I, I'm not saying that there isn't.
And it's not in, it's not in those codes, it's in, it's in another, it's in another form, fire protection, something, but it's not in that code stuff.
So, there's chapter 31, which was, that covers state fire marshal, and it might be in there, I can certainly take a look at that. But maybe, I guess, what I'm hearing is that, it's as you think, it's like potentially a law specific to sprinkler systems, not to grand, any sort of grandfathered in variance.
They were grandfathered in, as I understood, when I, when I looked at that, they were grandfathered in in the very beginning, 12 years. Once they, once they, once they were, the code came in after the building was built, or whatever, in order before the building was built. But even at that, I think there was a 12-year period, they were allowed not to have to do anything. But at the end of 12 years, I think there was a requirement there that they had to do something for fire protection.
I'm not aware of that, but I guess we could look and see if there's anything on the books in terms of state statute that is either directly regarding sprinkler systems or generally speaking to, I get a timeframe in which 12 years or another timeframe in which you have to come up with a compliance if somebody's grandfathered in. I would be, I said, I think probably chapter 31, which is the state fire marshal, would have some of that, if there's something to be in there.
Probably martial rules regulations.
So, that'd be the KARs, which would be the key, the, the adopted regulations. And that's where, like, what we talked about in terms of modifying ordinances, that's certainly the K, the state fire marshals, KARs, so that's that 22-1-1, where we submitted a request to modify our code through the ordinance, opposed to this modification, which would be through individual requests in the variance, does kind of the two options. There may, it may be in the KAR as well, if I take a look at the state statute regarding extinguisher systems and whatnot, but I don't have anything on top of head that says that exists, I haven't seen it in my research. I'm having to take a look at that.
Well, I mean, even if it existed, Heritage was built 25 years ago, and the 2003 code wasn't in fact.
They followed it 12 years, they followed 12 years.
That's, that's, that's all fine, but are these the state knocking on doors of the 12-year mark, shaking people down, asking if they had sprinklers?
I don't know, maybe we ought to get a fire marshal to come down, so we don't have more problems with it.
I'd be surprised, if it started stepping up, because that's been 18 years ago.
It's enforceable. Well, basically.
There's a lot of things that are enforceable that aren't enforced.
The many elements.
Yeah?
We're not here to decide what needs to be enforced, what's not. We're here to follow the law's support.
So, do you know that state statute?
We follow those guidelines, we're all supposed to do that.
Do you know that state statute?
I don't know the state statute, but I think maybe you tried, the KAR or whatever it is.
I don't want to get lost in the murkiness here. Questioning or asking for a variance in state statute is following the process. Get on, it's what, it's, it's, there's a, there's an application on the state website for you to apply for a variance. Because we're asking for a variance, or they're asking for a variance, it means it's breaking the law, we're, we're actively challenging the law under the proper guidelines the state has provided us to do.
Who sent the letter?
I think the.
Our fire marshal, that's the letter? Our fire marshal, the paper?
No.
Jason, engineer from Heritage.
So, why are we discussing?
They asked for a letter of support from us.
They want us to support something to break the law.
Jerry, we're not breaking the law!
So, then if they change the statute, the state legislature continue, is that changing the law when they change the statute?
If the, if the state legislature changes statutes, no, it's not breaking the law.
Same thing with the variance.
It is not changed, and we're involved.
It is without specific.
We're involved in it as a model in.
My question is, are we going to do a variance for every company that wants to do something that they probably should do but don't want to?
That is a case-by-case basis.
Now, that's what bothers me. I mean, it's one thing if we change the code and everybody gets treated equally, or if we do a case-by-case, and this company has to go away.
So, should we not have a variance process at all for any of this stuff? I mean, should we go back to the Magna Carta?
I didn't, Cory, you don't.
The law's a law, the law's a law because they're challenged.
You want a statement?
No, it's not, because I, I.
I feel like you both are looking at it by black and white, and it's, it's not, yeah, I agree, it should be a case-by-case basis. It, it shouldn't be black and white, and that's why we're here.
You know, actually, in the beginning, I don't think it should have been a council thing to do it. I think the company that is in question, and it says that they can apply to the state fire marshal themselves, so why it came to the council for us, I, I don't agree with that.
I think they, they chose to come to us, it was.
If they can come to the council with anything they want, we can choose to, we can choose to discuss it or dismiss it, I mean, there is no really list of things that people should come to council for. That's why we're here. And this council, future council, say, we don't think that's our purview, you need to go through other channels, or we have a discussion and decide, well, this is something we want to do as a council, and change the ordinance that would then be, you know, would impact everybody in that exact same situation the same way. We chose to try to do that, fire marshal said, no, they chose the other path, so I don't see, I don't see the issue at all of how this happened.
Well, that's, that's your opinion, and I have mine, so.
We left that, we had a lengthy conversation after that meeting, and we concluded that the biggest concern from this body was the liability portion, and that the city being responsible. You were part of that conversation, you had it with them, with this body, we always won.
It was a very lengthy conversation.
We discussed about the liability question, about, and if the state wanted to sign off on, on a variance, and the liability's all on them, or something, whatever happened that was a result of them not having enough sprinklers, that's, that was kind of the spirit where I felt that we left that. And so, I don't see what we were giving.
And that was sitting there with what?
To change an ordinance, not the fire code, an ordinance that reclassified them into different classes, that's what we asked for. That was what we asked for.
But we can't change the code.
We didn't ask, we didn't ask to change.
It was up to next time, we can't change.
We don't ask to change the code. We did not ask to change the code. We asked to reclassify, we asked to change the ordinance.
We asked to change the code.
And the what?
The zoning.
The zoning? How does it work with the zoning?
Well, different, yeah, different zoning classification for different buildings, and we asked to change the zoning for that building, to go under, to go under a zone that requires.
Yeah, if you get a clarification from the guy who actually did the.
Recommendation?
Recommendation, shoot, the fireworks, kind of, so we can kind of clarify, it's like, we're, we're using terminology, so we have other things that may not be.
So, I, I think, where I want to start is where I think the council discussion has started here regarding Heritage Tractor is following the rules that's set up by the state fire marshal right now for requesting individual variance. And I think what the issue is, is that, that's a, that was one of the two processes that we laid out to the council, one being that we can, through ordinance, change the building code to allow all persons, I think Julie, you were speaking to this, the code would be enforceable uniformly to every single individual in the same manner, opposed to a variance, which is a single-off request. The issue for this, this process is that, I think, was, we had a discussion with, at some great length, when Heritage first came before the council, was that Heritage had that ability to go directly to the state fire marshal and ask for a variance, which takes the city out of it. The two paths, one was we changed the code through ordinance process, but we need the state fire marshal's approval to do that. The second is that the individual business, in this case Heritage, can go directly to the state fire marshal and ask for that variance. What I, in case you're correctly wrong, what I'm hearing now is, we've gone through the first process that we had control over, the state fire marshal said, no, thank you, send it back to Heritage, Heritage now is taken as an individual on their option, which is to request a variance from the state fire marshal. The rule, the council now, or at least what's been asked of the council, is not to approve or disapprove of that variance, but just to submit a letter of support for that variance. And that's, I think, I'm correctly or wrong, case, if that's what's being asked for from the state fire marshal's office, or from Heritage, who's making that request of the council?
Requesting a large.
Okay. So, and the letter of support from the.
And I decided to print, just, I decided to print it up to Cory.
And so, I think then the question before the council is whether or not the council as a governing body would like to adopt some formal letter supporting the variance. And I, I think, Casey, you may be the, I haven't seen anything from Heritage, I'm sure you've seen anything from Heritage, other than the, I think the state fire marshal had requested them for additional documentation?
Correct, they made additional documentation request for Heritage.
Okay. And for, and this is me speaking as attorney, I'd want to see that documentation before I make a decision to support or not support a variance, right? So, I think it'd be wise, my recommendation to the council would be that if you have that information in front of you, I think if you make an informed decision about whether or not to support the variance or not, and then do that in the council book. So, that would, my recommendation would be to get as much information as possible before making that decision, and if that's something that needs to happen quickly, and I think Casey, you have that information, that might be something that can be done quickly, and not, but, it's hard, it's hard for me to say, you know, from a variance perspective, what is, is not being requested, what I can and cannot support based upon that. But the role here is not for the council to be approving a variance, it just means to support through a letter to the state fire marshal at this point. And so, that's, that's, our role, or the council's role in this right now is only advisory or as a supportive position, not as anyone who's able to make a decision, or approving or disapproving of a variance. That was with the ordinance process that went through a month and a half ago, was, that was, to go back to Julie's point, uniform opposed to individual case-by-case basis.
You got a copy of that?
It was submitted?
Yeah.
I forwarded it to him.
The fire, the fire marshal sent to you?
Yeah, I got that email.
You got an email?
An email that was sent to Heritage.
Okay, we got, we got, got that?
Was it on, was it sent to us, or?
No, it was sent to Heritage, I got CC on it, because I was involved in the conversation with the state.
Sure that, and.
Julie, I got it yesterday, I was trying to be expedient with the process, and quite frankly, I think this is going up to a weirder thing than what it was, because we passed the ordinance so far, so I, I think we're starting to get down. I feel like there's something playing going on.
You think what?
I think there's things that are going on that are just trying to thwart the, the process, and it's, it's a simple letter of support, if we didn't support them getting a variance and have them put in, why did we pass a zoning change? Why would we have passed a zoning change if we didn't also?
So, has the letter of support been sent?
No.
Okay, so where is that from?
That's what I've asked for the government.
Oh. Okay, and we'll see that before it's in?
Well, I mean, we can, yeah.
I mean, I think for the government, I think we should have our.
Yeah, to Dakota's point, I think we need to get to that point first.
I want to see a copy of the letter that came from the fire marshal. And then I want to see a copy of the letter, whatever we're supposed to do, to send back, to send it back.
So, do you believe that the fire marshal wants us to take any judgmental documentation and, and, and issue a letter?
So, so to me. I'll, I'll be clear, I don't have, I don't have any information from the state fire marshal as to what they want exactly.
Yeah.
What I, I would imagine is that, so just, again, speaking generally, but the state fire marshal wants to make sure that the city council's on board with the change that we're going on, in its city limits.
And actually, they didn't even ask for the council, that was me thinking that this body, since we're so involved in it, want to be involved in that process, they asked specifically just for the fire departments, I thought it was more prudent, since we passed the ordinance, and it was already in front of this body, to bring it in front of this body.
What's our firing body thought about?
I've heard both things. In the CDC, I heard our fire chief was sport, and these two that sit on the CDC can attest to that, and then I've also heard that he's against it, so. But, and then, the last word I got from our chief was that if the state signs off on it, then I'm good with it. So, I've heard everything I've heard from him, to be honest with you. Cory, Susan, you guys, am I misinterpreting that?
It's, I mean, it's going back to my point that I mentioned earlier, that it's, it's that, you got to think about it as an exposure standpoint, if, if something were to happen and you say, oh, it's, it's the city's fault, or it's the state's fault, that's kind of where we want to shift the attention to, that's the whole point. It's a liabilities issue.
There's a letter that was sent to the fire marshals, from engineer.
Those were, these were.
That's the fire marshal.
This is strange to me that what the, the only change we got to the fire marshal, that they come back to say he supports this.
That's where I.
I mean, if something doesn't make sense, something doesn't make sense.
I mean. Just to be clear, dude, there was no zoning change, I'm not sure, we're, we need to be kind of clear on our language.
So, we had changed.
It was a classification of a building within the code, is what I understood happened there, with our request.
Right.
It was in a zoning.
Okay, so we asked to change something in the code.
Yeah.
That would change our classification, zoning classification.
Yeah.
That went to the fire marshal.
Correct.
To see that, that they knew that then it wouldn't be required of sprinkler systems if they approved what we'd asked for.
Correct.
Then they come in with this variance, asking for the exact same thing, and they come back to the council, asking if we support it?
I don't, I don't think they actually, as, as the mayor said, they were asking.
Or asking the city or the mayor anyway. Or the fire.
I haven't seen a lot of her, so I don't, I don't know what they're asking.
That's why I got confused, because I'm like, why are, why are you asking us for support when we've already submitted?
Going right back to that.
Right.
Did you put this up, just like, see previous?
It's like, it's not.
Scott, I would say based upon.
That's the engineer.
Engineer.
The what?
The engineer. Or.
I was just going to say that one of the distinctions here, and I, from the state fire marshal's perspective, I think it's probably from the variance with plans, they can see how exactly impacted that would, would work, opposed to an ordinance, or a code change through ordinance, where it would be kind of open for anyone who'd come in going forward, so it's a little broader, so that might be why they're asking for that, that clarification.
From the quester.
Correct.
I don't see how our, you know, anybody's ordinance is required, but I don't see how any of that's going to impact the decision.
I can only speak, I can, guess I can only speak to what Casey stands that they want, which would be, if they're asking for a letter of support, and the fire chief in, or the city, whoever, however they reported, that's their internal processes, it might be needing clarification from them, but what certainly strikes me as, is this council voted upon a code change that would be along the same lines as the variance, at least would have the same effect.
Right.
And so, there certainly, certainly strikes me that, that would be, it'd be consistent with that ordinance change, with the code, or the code change, from the council then adopt a letter of support for the same project, based on the fact that, I think, the council knows that that project looks like it entails. That being said, I can't speak to why the state fire marshal would want a specific letter of support in this instance, or why it would matter to them, opposed to just, what are the plans, are they good or bad, and will proven who are the experts on that.
The left hand's not talking to the right hand, for one, that was the first indication I got, from, from our state record, I did not speak to the state department, I spoke to the state rep, who spoke to the state department. Also, there was some concern that something, somehow they got the perception that city administration of Baldwin didn't approve of this, I don't understand how that could happen when the governing body voted on it, but I don't know that yet. So, that's all I know.
It appears to me that the outcome is what they did.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the indication from the state fire marshal is they approved these all time. That's what I was doing, that's secondhand information, that's from the state rep, again, I didn't speak to the state fire marshal myself, but that is what I was doing.
I probably speak to the state rep.
As a citizen.
Why can't I, so, explain this, why couldn't I speak to our state rep? I'd like to hear this.
Because that's information from the council, that's the council's business, that's not the state rep's business.
This is the state department.
It's the state department.
The state fire marshal's office is the city department?
Well, the state department, yes, it's a state office.
I think what Jerry, Jerry is saying, I mean, is that, um, it seems almost inappropriate for me to go and talk to him to try to get this done, without the counsel. Like, you know, like we had Glenn go talk, you know, negotiate with people, the council votes on it, they didn't do it, I'm not sure why we didn't go to the council and do that.
There's nothing he can go do to make this happen. He can't go make an agreement.
That's understood.
Okay, so that's all we.
I understand that.
And I think the fact that he voted in favor of.
He's supporting a business in the community. And he is a citizen of the state of Kansas, so he has every right to go talk to his representative.
So, he's acting, he's acting as a citizen, not requesting information from the council.
Jerry, I can act as mayor as well.
He can ask any, request any information he wants, that's not, that's, that's, I don't see what information gathering is, I mean, where are you going with that? You think there's something illegal here? I, I don't.
You, you personally said that we're breaking the law like five times, and it's completely inappropriate to use that language.
So, if that's what you believe, then you make a charge, go prove it, and let's just, you know, let's not dangle around with what you think's going on, if that's what you think's going on, tell us why, or stop saying it.
I think there's nothing unethical.
What's unethical?
That I'm sticking up for a business is unethical.
Well, you're making it a political issue is what you're doing.
How am I making it a political issue? By sticking up for a business in our community.
You're carrying it to the politicians. It's, it's a problem here, and, 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 yes, you, you have the right to go talk to any, any person you want to in legislation, whatever. I don't, you know, either.
So, then when I spoke to the lieutenant governor.
This is coming through us, that has to come back to the council, then I think it's a problem.
Why is that a problem?
Because we didn't, we didn't advise him to do so. Why ask, why question?
Whoa, 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 I think you need to read state law on the mayor's responsibilities in a city of the third class.
Well, but doesn't the mayor work for the council?
No, the mayor works for the citizens.
Well, but the council is the one that should direct you.
No, the council doesn't direct the mayor.
Um, so, then do you have anything to say about that?
So, there would be two places to go look, to see what the role of the mayor is, the role of the council would be, that'd be our ordinances, and then state law regarding the power of a mayor in the city of the third class. I would say this, the mayor normally is, there's certain things that are the mayor's responsibilities, setting the agenda, running the meetings, those are clearly stated out, then there's some superintending powers, the power, the role of enforcing all the laws of the city, and then, and then there's staff, and the staff would be, starting with Glenn as the city administrator, and then the folks who work under him are appointed by the mayor, another, well, it's another role, the mayor has appointment powers. In terms of direction, the governing body, the council and the mayor of the governing body, the governing body normally is going to be directing staff on what, on, on steps to take. So, Julie referenced this a minute ago in terms of a contract, if Glenn is going to be negotiating a contract on behalf of the city, very often the council would be directing him about what steps to take to go about negotiating the contract, to bring the contract back to the council, to bring in bids, things like that. The mayor's role isn't one that's being directed by the council, it's almost parallel to the council, with different, some different responsibilities, that's why the council's, you know, voting on matters, there's, you know, five council members that are voting, unless there's a tie, when the mayor can then break that tie, or veto certain changes that should turn motions. So, there, again, it's more about, I think you see those, the mayor and the councils, the governing body, and parallel opposed to the governing, or the council being above the mayor, and the mayor threatening the mayor as to what to do. Conversely, the mayor can't vote and tell, you know, direct staff policy, or staff to do certain things, because that's the job of the, the city council. So, there's some different responsibilities for each group, but the mayor is not, doesn't have the ability to tell council what to do, and the council doesn't have the ability to tell the mayor what to do, they have to work in accordance, and that's where the mayor sets the agenda, but the council then executes that agenda and votes on that agenda. So, that's where, I think, you are concerned opposed to form one another.
And it's, and it's a check as well, he can go, you come up with the craziest harebrained idea, we can tell 5-0, no, no.
Yeah.
And, and the way to think about it is, if you're the mayor, it's along the line of executive, council, one of legislative branch, and so, they're, they're working not, there's not, not one branch above the other, but they're working simultaneously together, I think is probably the best way, but because of how the council structure is, it's much closer than it would be in a much larger delivery body, like the, you know, governor and the state and the house, you know, state or, that's your house, the state senate, or, you know, on the federal level. But that's where, in the end, there's not going to be direction from the council to the mayor regarding his role, just as the mayor can't direct the council to take votes on certain things.
So, is it fair to say that the mayor can't really enter, bind the city in an agreement without, I mean, that's a council, so, so the powers are limited to where, you know, he can't go out, the mayor can't go out and negotiate, bind the city to anything that doesn't, isn't voted on by the council?
Unless the council votes and gives him that power.
That's different, because that's.
That's different, because that's, that's different, right?
Right.
On the, on the mayor's own prerogative, they can't go bind the city to anything, so my point very you is, he can go do everything he wants, get all the information he wants, but in the end, you have one vote, whether you want to do whatever it is in front of you. So I don't see any harm in gathering information and bringing it to the council for action. In the end, the council has the final say.
Am I supposed to say something? You all look at it.
Yeah.
You normally have something to say.
I personally, I personally like that the mayor is a little bit more than just swinging an hammer.
Right, and, and Jerry, I think you're using, you know, you're saying it's unethical today, but I think if it was something you supported, you'd, you'd say it was being resourceful. And I appreciate that Casey.
I may not say that it was resourceful, I might follow him, but I would say that it was resourceful. You don't like the motion?
No. I don't think it's going to be made right now. What's the timing on the recommendation? Something tomorrow?
Soon as possible.
I mean, the only thing I would.
I don't know what else information you guys.
Well, you know, again, I don't want to ask the question, that's why I don't know why.
I don't either, I can, sure ask them, I can, I can, if there's confusion, is it?
So, well, Corey's point, do we, we want to make sure that this recommendation doesn't then put us in a liability situation, where they come back later and say, well, you, you know, so, I don't want that to be part of this, you know, their job to look at the variance and make a decision based on the plans, so I'm confused as to why we need to boil that recommendation. And I would just point to the, you know, maybe we need to make, make the link for them on why we asked for that zoning change for this exact same instance.
Yeah.
I mean, that is on record as a vote that can.
Sure, send that email and ask us why this is on top of what we want.
The previous, the previous vote. It would be interesting how that.
I'll send you an email and ask you. All right, anything else, you want to keep on? Much to me, what could you find, Scott?
No previous, or no meetings since previous council, next meeting Friday morning, seven forty-five, again, Second floor, City Hall.
We need to go, Cory.
We have not met, see.
Have we met since last council meeting?
Yes. Yeah, we did, okay, um, so we only had the one agenda item, uh, we got an update from Jason Hoskins, uh, about the, uh, the highway requirement, the sidewalks and all that. And basically, he came in with a few kind of low hanging fruit things that we could maybe trim that number down quite a bit. Mostly with the aprons going to the third street and then up into Eisenhower, Eisenhower stretched almost all the way down, I quit the block and shaved down quite a bit of that, removing that sidewalk from the south end, north end, uh, which shaved down a lot of that as well. And I think it was mainly just those two aprons from the Hummer, right, and then that, then that sidewalk coming over there. It was in the ballpark of where we need to be, um, he was going to take a closer look at, uh, the impact, the actual numerical impact of those numbers, and then give back to us.
He thought that, just to fall off on, he thought, so we're sitting at about seven hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar deficit. By the time we're done, and what he thought this is all just high end, what he believed is removing the sidewalk, ten foot sidewalk on the north end, there's still a sidewalk on the south end, right, there's a sidewalk, but on the north side, removing that sidewalk, and then moving changes to Eisenhower, and then, they had another weird thing that literally just went off of fifty-six and riding the Pizza Hut, and no traffic could access it unless you were on the pizza, Pizza Hut already has another inch off of fifty-six, so, but, well, I'll second that. If we remove the North Second Street, I think, the North, the North Second Street, why would we have that if the citizens from North Second can't access it? So, but from my understanding, and Glenn or Cory or Susan can correct me, is that we would still, no matter what, have a two hundred, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar requirement of us because of the inspections and the extra, the engineering.
Yeah, that's correct, it's, it's because this is, uh, well, the total price is almost a million dollars, because this, this project was designed almost ten years ago, and the estimates were done, and so they're ready to, um, you know, let some bids here this year, but yeah, the cost is way escalated, so you're right, even if we shave this down, we're still between two and three hundred thousand dollars with the inspection and the extra cost on this. I've asked Ben Hart to look into some options for us, um, in either a budget or whatever we do here, he hasn't got back to me yet on that. We haven't seen the final cost yet from, from Jason either, so when that comes in, we'll look at our options to have this forward. We definitely want to, because that's been really a decade long march, and COVID got in the way, and a lot of other things did. So, this, this was on the books a long time ago, but it's gonna be a great, a great addition there to, to our B side of the town there. It's really gonna make that look great. So, it won't be pretty while it's going on, we know that, we never thought it would be, but once they get it done, I think this would be a tremendous addition for our town. So, yeah, we have some pretty hard choices coming up all the way around us.
So if we went with all those changes, Jason thought that that gets back down to two hundred fifty thousand, that even if we did the changes, that would still require out that seven hundred thousand, that's what he thought, but he was going to run the numbers to say.
He was also, um, there was also the, the point that you, you brought to about, um, how the state now funds up to two million, and before, ten years ago, they didn't do that.
And her background, yeah.
So, we may, we may have some recovery there as well.
Yeah, that's still gonna leave us with that gap.
So, yeah, it will.
And we'll still have a gap, be aware, but yeah, I, I, we're pretty hopeful they'll, they'll get to the two million, anything above that that's gonna be on us. So, whatever we're comfortable doing, is, is gonna be our cost at that point, so that's gonna be the decision.
So we wanted, basically, essentially, we pared it back down to what the ten, the original project was, and asked for the six, to see.
Yeah, we're just gonna run some different scenarios, and we'll bring that council and decide on what to do. Yep, uh, next meeting is the twenty-second, I believe, four o'clock, Second floor, City Hall.
Public safety, Susan.
We have not met, our next meeting is May ninth at four o'clock. Night, May ninth.
Public portion until it's clear.
Uh, we have not met either, and our next meeting is May eleventh at nine o'clock.
Do you have plans, Scott?
We have not met, um, next meeting is the twelfth at one P M, is that you did that? Second floor, City Hall.
We'll have one, and I'll, I'll let everybody know if it. Just a reminder, we have a work session, I believe, next Tuesday for the first budget session, the L P D, have you already said that?
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
Well, we said it the last.
Right, yeah, that's correct, it's the last council. We're holding those out, out the, we're.
But just a reminder that typically we'd want to see from staff with a budget, revenue neutral budget or something, and then.
We're working, we're, yeah, we're working with Bakers Hill and with our department on that, so we'll get that for you soon again, well, before the meeting.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Council call?
Yeah.
More for you than, than council information, they're, they're running a cable, uh, of what went, that street, and the, the street that's right across from me that goes to the rest of the, Orchard Lane, and they've got their equipment standing on the sidewalk, those heavy cable rigs, and the, the truck that's pulling it, and I think maybe you ought to advise one of the guys to, to check that, if they're good.
Yeah.
And I think that the way they're born, I think they're going to pull cable in from that side, which really doesn't make much difference about the cables, except for waiting on the sidewalk, and going on the sidewalk.
Yeah, they want the crackers one side.
But that's just your information for the rest of the guys.
Okay, we'll check that out.
We don't need a most urgent executive session this time, do we?
No, um, I think there'll probably be an update maybe in the next council meeting, just based upon what Jim Pyron has been doing the last couple of weeks. But there's nothing as of today, I think, he's in possession about, um, and Julie, if you have some visibility work here in the last time, I'd be happy to talk to you as well about the number.
Uh-uh, you're not in motion, Benjamin?
Second.
You moved in second, all prepared, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Susan, was that, Susan, did you second that? Did you second that one?
Yes.
Okay.
You gonna send our, our new boy over to court on Thursday? Get him, get him queued up on a, nice meet, that's a, that's a nice training intro, like, come on over, you're gonna see all the people now, you're gonna see all the, all the calls, you're gonna have to respond to.
No.
No, I think you should have my office, James has a bunch of, they don't have much in their office, they, I reckon, I think it probably has a meeting corner, yeah.
So.
Would it work all the way through?
No.
Oh, it sounds?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't even start, so I just recorded the la, second half of it.
Oh, okay.
It just kept spinning.
Yeah, I know, isn't that kind of, really?